Good morning, everyone. Everyone in the room ready to get started? Okay. Well, it's eleven o'clock AM. We're going to begin this regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Uh, we're going to start by asking everyone to please silence or turn off your cell phones. And then we will start with the pledge and pledge of allegiance. And then a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Beginning with the public comment portion, um, any public? Oh, yeah. Approving the agenda, that is not on my agenda.
I'm here to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All right, do a vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, agenda is approved. Uh, on my agenda next, we have public comments that are not on the agenda. Any citizens wishing to speak on issues not on the agenda? Or requested to send a message in chat? Use the raise hand feature in Zoom? Or raise our hands in person? The chair will call on the public in order. Comment is limited to three minutes. Not including board questions. Action, if required, will be assigned to county staff. All right, I see Jane Harrelson has her hand raised online. Gonna let her chime in here.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee, can you hear me?
Sure can.
All right. Over thirty-seven thousand dollars was collected in January to operate and maintain an affordable public aquatic center. We still need millions to either renovate what we have or build new. The interim county manager, Lauren Snyder, is scheduling a meeting for post-staff and PB Swims to discuss and look at data to help clarify the decision between renovation and a new build. So, you commissioners have been sent and so had the staff and the staff a seven-page report supporting why it's statistically, environmentally, and socially responsible to renovate what we have. PB Swims is moving forward with a four million dollar capital campaign to replace the pool, upgrade HVAC, and upgrade ADA in our existing aquatic center. It's a miracle we do get the money to build a new reg center with a pool. These taxpayers still have to determine what to do with Lake County Intermediate School that has that empty Olympic swimming pool sitting there. So, I thank you all for serving and for considering uh my points and it is a long report, but please read it, thank you.
All right, will do Jane, thank you, I saw that email this morning. Appreciate ya.
Thank you Jane.
Okay, um, who else we got, anyone in the room? No one else online? All right. Let's go ahead and move on to agenda item number one. Oh, yes. That is on my agenda and I skipped it, sorry. Uh, okay, uh, we'll start with community information items. Um, I did have something I wanted to share, I gotta find find it here in my emails. Uh, if anyone else wants to go first.
I don't have any updates, but I do just wanna say thank you so much, Andy, for last week, you seem to get so much done. Had so many conversations and I was just, um, just made me feel really great that what a team we have. It was nice to come back into the office and see an update from you about all the things that you were able to check in on last week, so I just wanted to say thanks publicly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It was, it was a good week.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to update everybody on the grooming after our awesome meeting two weeks ago. We're still trying to get to abandon the golf course and I thought we had kinda come to that agreement, so I'd like to just run it by you two that we only have three or four more weeks left in this ski season, maybe eight. And then as the spring goes, what I'd like to do is abandon the golf course like we talked about, bring it up to the mineral belt and try and use it up there as much as possible. It only works if we get someone to volunteer, I'm happy to do it. We have a couple other volunteers. Michael, I guess you're gonna have to tell us where we can put it. That is what my dream is for the next four weeks. And so, we've got a bunch of volunteers. Jane could drive it and I know that it's thin, but that machine is lightweight and could just do tune-ups as much as possible, so. I know a lot of people thought we were talking about next year, but I'd like to see what we can do this year. It's getting groomed down to golf courses every eight days, nine days, so it's kind of it's languishing down there and I'd like to see it put to use on a super hard surface. And uh, and we got people willing to shovel bare spots, so I just wanted you guys to know that that is what I've asked Tim to send a letter to Duncan. I guess it's not really a decision item, but if you had any objections, I guess now would be the time to voice that.
No?
No.
All right, thanks for that. Commissioner Bullock, um, I'll update everyone on the um process and the progress we're at with uh hiring a county manager for when current county manager, uh, Tim Bergman, uh steps down. We had thirty-five applicants, uh, twelve qualified and two withdrew. Uh, first round interviews are complete with the interview panel. Uh, this week, uh commissioners and leadership team will be able to interview the finalists. Uh, I think we're down to five currently. Um, and I'm pretty grateful that we had such a strong pool to choose from. Um, the goal is appointing the new county manager on April fifteenth at that regular meeting on that day. Um, that is all I have for community information items. So, that's it from the commissioners. Um, now we'll move on to agenda item number one. Calendar work session, regular meeting, agenda review with led by Sandra Pettis. Thanks Sandra.
Yes. Hope everybody had, hope you had a good spring break.
Thank you.
We had a good weekend. All right, let's start with calendar. Looking ahead to next week. Monday, the twenty-four. Uh, Lake County School District Board of Education work session um five thirty to eight PM. Planning commission meeting. Important. Uh, from four to six in this room, okay? That should be on everybody's calendar. Tuesday, the twenty-fifth is a very big day. Um, we have a special meeting from eight forty-five to nine forty-five. We then have the AM work session from ten AM to noon. Your afternoon work session from one to four. Then have a second special meeting from four to five. And then the city and county joint work session um at CMC is from six to eight. Okay?
Can you just pause for a second?
Sure.
Oh yeah. Got it, I'll be there.
Okay. Uh, Wednesday, the twenty-sixth. Community coffee from eight thirty to ten. Uh, your Wednesday work session from one thirty to two. Actually, this is the legislative, the quick legislative one. And then, um, your uh regular work session from two to four.
Do you want me to post the climax tours involved in there?
I wasn't sure about that. Cause it's not technically a meeting, it's a tour, but.
Yeah, as a person, I'm suggesting.
Okay, okay.
It's not, since it's, I think we facilitate by them, it just doesn't.
Right. Okay. Uh, okay, twenty-seventh, um, there's nothing on this calendar. Twenty-seventh, uh, would you not just hold, I mean, the whole of the special? Right. I think it does that or not yet. Um, not yet until, until that's finalized. Um, but yeah. Um, and then Friday, the twenty-eighth, Twin Lakes Community Coffee from nine to ten. All good?
Looks good to me, I mean.
Mm-hmm.
Um, all right. Work session, agendas from next week. Is this still? Make sure this is just shared on Instagram. Okay. Starting with the twenty-fifth. From about ten to eleven, um, you'll have your feedback session for commissioner communication strategies and community engagement opportunities led by CME Scheiner, communications manager and Liz S Miller, operations director. Eleven to about eleven fifty, um, discussion regarding existing potential grants, potential grants for the sheriff's office led by Heath Speckman. And uh, a quick ten-minute calendar review. For me. One PM agenda. We'll start with a presentation and overview of the Summit Community Care Clinic and the support they provide to Lake County led by Jesse Kerdjat, chief operations officer and Sarah Dayton, director of strategic operations and development. Uh, number two, presentation and overview of the history, purpose, and impact of Lake County builder generation and future collaboration led by Carly Saylor, Elsie Bag, executive director, and Kristy Galarza, Gem Consulting Limited President. And lastly, uh, will be a presentation from Oakwood Homes regarding the housing at ten thousand two hundred foot project led by Jackie Wheelahan, housing program manager, and Amy Schwartz from Oakwood Homes. Um, and this is uh for the joint work session with the city. Um, will be a discussion on permits for and proposed changes to the lifetime race series led by you guys and the city council.
Great. What's the location of that?
That will be the event, CMC in the Climax Route four oh one.
CMC.
Oh, CMC. Got it. Sorry.
Yep.
Any question?
No problem.
Right. Special meetings. Um, your first one at eight forty-five AM. Will be an executive session.
In this one, we'll go into talking about some operational efficiencies and personnel matters as we talk about the contingency budget with state and federal changes, so we can have a bit of a worker act, uh, conversation of those impacts and some of the contingency plans that we built with uh some directors, so. Will be your, not your last meeting with me, but one of your last.
It should be personal, not personal. It's just.
It could be personal.
And four PM.
So this one will be your last meeting with me. Um, so the first one, so as we have moved through the first quarter of working on um plans and meetings, design um for the courthouse renovation. Uh, so the previous board, you know, committed five million dollars of the general fund and we have the eight million dollar COP. We have left that five million dollars in essentially in the bank account, in our investment account, we have not moved anything over. We've also left the COP in an investment account. So, now is the time where we would like to use that previously budgeted funding to actually move it into a cash fund so we can start paying some of the bills for the architectural design and that. So, we'll talk through that and then the uh week after, or me, uh, two weeks after on April ninth, you will have a work session with the architects. Um, work done today, all of that, and then moving forward, so. But, and then that's where we talk about like the executive committee or like appointing someone to be a part of those regular touch bases.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we'll find out monthly managers report from me. Um, just an update, uh, on kind of what April looks like from my perspective, you know, that can all change. So, it will be done. And then, uh, I don't know, does it need to be a resolution to appoint Lauren as interim county manager? Okay, so it would be a resolution to appoint, um, Lauren as your interim county manager until you appoint a county manager.
Great. Sounds good.
All right. And then, take a look at your regular meeting agenda for April first. Um, start out with calendar work session, a regular meeting agenda review, uh, communications update and review with CME. Discussion and consideration of the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight, a resolution of Lake County Colorado approving the transfer of previously appropriated monies between funds or between spending agencies of Lake County Colorado and adopting a supplemental budget and making supplemental and revised appropriations for Lake County Colorado for the fiscal period beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty-five and ending on the last day of March twenty twenty-five. Led by Candace Bryant, sort of our next director. Number four is discussion and consideration of the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten, a resolution amending the signage regulations in the Lake County Land Development Code led by Melissa Kendre, uh, CPD deputy director. Number five, discussion and consideration of land use file twenty-five dash zero two, a rezone in the Timber Ranch subdivision located at two forty-five Evergreen Drive, Lebo, Colorado, led by Anne Schneider, CPD director. Number six, discussion and consideration of an amendment to the PSA with shape architecture, architecture studio and downstream construction for the coroner's facility led by Anne Schneider, CPD director. Uh, number seven, discussion and consideration of a PSA with solution builders and Oakwood Homes Company for the pre-development of the housing at two, ten thousand two hundred foot project.
Do you mind just seeing, could you could move please?
Or me or Julia?
Or Julia, yeah.
Sorry.
So, wrong her.
Yeah, one year.
Wrong her. And then you'll see.
She heard us.
Thanks Julia.
Thanks Sage.
I'm sorry.
Okay, number eight, discussion and consideration of a first amendment to a memorandum of understanding between Lake County Builder Generation, the Lake County Public Health Agency, and Lake County Board of County Commissioners to discontinue the provisioning of internet, telephone, IT, and printer services led by Liz S Miller, operations director.
Why is that not on a consent agenda?
We've not changed the policy yet.
I just, we have to.
It's coming.
Yes, it is.
Where is it? Is it on this agenda?
The finance policy's going to be all together.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
It's, yeah.
A proper deal.
It will come when everything comes.
Cool, thank you. Um, discussion and consideration of quarter one updates for the Water Enterprise Board led by Bryce, the board resource program manager. Um, discussion and consideration of an augmentation water supply agreement between Lake County and Mount Massa Golf Course led by Bryce. Discussion and consideration of an agreement renewal with the Lake County Community Fund for a fiscal sponsorship with a goal for twenty twenty-five led by Tony Yan, those deputy director. Discussion and consideration of a grant award for the sheriff's office in the amount of one hundred twenty-four thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars to fund the cost of an additional patrol deputy led by Heath Speckman, sheriff. And then discussion and consideration of a grant award for the sheriff's office in the amount of one hundred forty-five thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars to start a school resource officer program also led by our sheriff, Heath. Um, consent agenda, retail liquor license renewal for Trace Corona's LLC doing business as La Nita Tacos and.
Mariscos.
Mariscos. Uh, I even asked for it earlier. Approval of payroll from March twenty-first. Uh, number three, approval of accounts payable packets from March tenth to March sixteenth and March seventeenth to March twenty-third. And number four, approval of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners position on twenty twenty-five legislation as discussed, as you will discuss on March nineteenth. Okay?
Can we make a couple changes to our agenda template?
What would you like to change?
Um, it'd be great if it had approval of agenda.
Yes.
In between your cell phones and community information items.
It's right here.
Oh, excuse me, it'd be great.
I don't know why, I don't know why it wasn't on Andy's version of this agenda.
It probably is.
I didn't either, yeah, I was just saying. I literally.
We can bolt that.
I literally wrote a note right under approval of agenda that says approval of agenda. Okay. Um, and then the other thing is that under the public comments, not on the agenda, can we change that so it says public comments on any items not included in a public hearing? Cause that's the issue, right? Like, we're still in this place where we need to figure out when the public can comment on things that are on the agenda. And when it's a hearing, that's when the public comment needs to be in its own section. But things like uh, the operational premise liquor license, the amendment to the PSA with the SE group, like all of those things are on the agenda and it says public comment not on the agenda. But there is no place where the public can comment on things on the agenda.
Um, and I think my suggestion would be for the items that you would like to offer public comment on, perhaps to, you know, type on the agenda in those items cause it might be kind of difficult to pick and choose during the meeting which ones you're going to.
That's what I'm saying is that we can say you can comment on everything on the agenda. That is not a public hearing. Instead of public comments not on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting that maybe not everyone in the public would know how to differentiate what is a hearing and subject to public comment or not.
Right, but we say that on the agenda. We can say, we can say like, if it's a land use or the sign code, we would say you can't comment on the sign code as that public comment has been closed.
Gotcha.
Right. But it says information also that people understand what they can comment on or not, that's what we're trying to get to and we still haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah. Well, let's uh, let's think about the some of those maybe, so like A, you have the led by, B, public comment accepted.
Yes.
Public comment not accepted.
Yes, that.
So then, you guys can open it. Sounds good.
For each one.
Oh, why not? Yeah, for each agenda.
That's why I was getting in, I'm sorry about it.
Uh, I thought we.
Cause it's not your discretion, so.
Yeah.
We did, but we can.
Except for public here.
We, yeah, we can be better on that than Commissioner Earlson on the agenda development of this. Um, right, you know, folks wanna comment on calendar and agenda review?
Right.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
And then, just making it clear for each agenda item, if folks do wanna make uh public comments, so it's actually written on there, but for each agenda item.
Okay, is it, I think we tried to do that.
That might be helpful more in through the agenda too.
Wait.
We tried to do that.
I don't know if we can make meetings happen like in any normal amount of time if we're doing public comment on each agenda item.
Right, yeah.
We tried to do that, we didn't like.
It's, as far as an efficient use of staff, taxpayer dollars paying you guys in this room and you gotta sit in here and every single item, like it's just not efficient, not a, doesn't feel like a well-run machine. If we gotta do it on every item.
Well.
So what I think, what I think we're kind of getting at is that public comments are allowed at the beginning, but they can be on anything, I don't know what, why do we, are we excluding stuff that's on the agenda that are not allowed to comment?
Public hearing, there are specific times where you open up public comment for only that thing. Like, like the sign code, you know how we have, you go to the
Planning Commission.
Land Commission meeting and that is when public comment happens.
That's why they can't comment on certain things.
They can't comment on that unless it's here in this room.
I guess what we could do, we could look at maybe those items just putting in parentheses after, um, uh, B, just saying not open to public comment maybe?
Yeah, public comment on, on everything except
Instead of, yeah. And then change.
Agenda item.
Yeah, and then change it in the, in the top paragraph.
Yes.
And just say, um.
Public comment on all subjects excluding agenda items, number blah blah blah.
Okay. We can make that change for this next.
Okay.
Okay.
Goal is to make it super clear for the public.
Right.
Right now, it is not clear.
Gotcha.
So, as soon as we get there, I'll stop bringing it up.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Andrea.
Of course.
And I have two other questions.
Sure.
Sorry, when are we going to talk about the animal shelter? Since that, I know Andy, you've been working on it with Dana, I love that, I just wanna make sure that we're making time in whatever work session or meeting that we need to make.
Given some updates to staff that I'm, I'm hoping to have relayed to you guys pretty soon, so we can get ahead of having to schedule a whole another work session. Um.
Great.
So, since sunshine rules don't allow me to directly speak with you guys about some of these issues, cause it kind of goes beyond. We just want to be on the safe side of how we're communicating, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so as soon as uh Tim and Lauren can get to you guys and address us well about what we've all chatted about.
The next steps.
Yeah, yeah, there's some new developments.
Okay. Then also, I wanna make sure we're making time for next steps on the motocross.
A meeting yesterday
Yeah.
with uh Kim and Jeffs. I'm waiting uh to get some things back from them and then we'll take that up to the next steps.
Okay. Cool, I just don't want to like have everything fill up and then we need to also be able to get these things on our agenda.
Yeah.
And then the last, the last thing is that I've heard, I've had quite a few comments or concerns from people about our audit. And I do know that at the city, when I was treasurer, we had an update from the auditor every year.
Mm-hmm.
And I was just wondering if that's common practice here at the county to get the update from the auditor? Okay, and when would, when would that be?
We did it, um, so we did that with the previous board, but if you would like an update from Dimitri, um, Candace can work on scheduling either a work session or a regular meeting agenda to walk through it. And we can find the, we can get the recording um, from when he presented the audit to the previous board
Mm-hmm.
and they accepted it, so we can get you that recording, so you can share that with folks. Um, and you can hear that and then we can get the
Yeah.
uh, get Dimitri uh here with DPM Consulting, that's the firm we use.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but yes, it is, um, so when I.
So it was with the previous board?
Yeah, well, um, yes, it was done with the previous board as the audit wrapped up. So they accepted that audit and then met with Dimitri, but it was a, it was, was an open meeting. Um.
Okay.
Yeah, and that is.
Just we have to ask follow-up questions maybe? Maybe if we have follow-up questions, we can schedule a
Sure.
another. But let's, we can follow up with the staff about that. Does that work for you guys? If you have follow-up questions?
And it is, and just to, yes, and just to clarify too, it is that is after the audit is done, the auditor comes and presents. And just to, yes, and just to clarify too, it is, that is, after the audit is done, the auditor comes and presents to the board, answers any of your questions, walks through with Finance and you.
Awesome. Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
I figured, I just double check.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, that's all.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, and the other stuff just leave me in when it's time to schedule something and we'll get it, get it looked out.
Thank you, Sandra.
Great, thanks, Sandra.
You're welcome. Sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, I wanna talk about this newspaper thing.
Yeah.
We have two pricing options, um, this first one is the money that we have budgeted in the operations newspaper marketing for the year. And I don't think we've used that yet, so this was thirty six hundred to work with. This is, um, so we'll each get a letter to the editor, and I think realistically this timeline is how it's gonna work out. So we can start this Commissioner Corner on, in May, um, and then, these are the prices and frequency prorated for the rest of the year. From May first, uh, for an eighth of a page, which is five hundred, seven hundred and fifty words. Um, and then, here's the surplus of each option, so if you wanna do one submission a month, it would leave us with twenty six hundred. And these are just some options of what that would pay for.
Mm-hmm. Cool.
Could you happen to count my words?
I'll do it after this.
There's a, there's a program.
There's a button, okay.
A square, oh, yeah?
I think it's like a page, five hundred is usually like around a page.
Yeah.
See, it's spaced, it's not spaced for hundred.
But you think that's enough space for basically a.
I think it's a good size update.
An eighth of a page?
The pages are big though.
Okay.
So, it's up to you guys, if you wanna do once a month, taking turns, twice a month, um, this is how many would be left for the rest of the year. In total, between all of you.
What, we thinking two times a month?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Two times.
Um, and then that saves us money, we could, uh, provide a link at the bottom of our Commissioner Corner that would take us, take, uh, readers to the county website. To provide information of things that we used to do in that full page thing, so we can still kind of get that out there, but save some money and do our Commissioner Corner bi-weekly.
Okay, this is another pricing option that would be a little bit more money, it would pull more two hundred dollars from your contingency fund and expend the operations marketing fund. But it would, um, give you a little more room to play with stuff that's not. Um, efficient recurring.
I'd much prefer the first options at two times a month because I don't want to expend your budget to communicate, cause that is your department's job. And, um, I'd like there to be that, I appreciate being able to use of the, some of your budget to do this. And it would also, it looks like especially if we did it two times a month, we'd still have, what, three half-page ads? Three and a half, three half-page ads.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which would get you three quarters, right? Like, since we're referring to this, but, yeah, so you could just still do three quarters worth of updates. I would feel okay, I would feel best about that.
I like that too, Elsa.
The two times, hello?
The two B.
Two B.
Two B.
Or, you know, two, yes, two times a month, you guys decide what you do with the rest of it, excuse me. And then I'm happy to discuss if, like, the year goes on and you all need to use some of our contingency, since we dipped into years for communication, we can. I wanna, I, I would be open to having a conversation about that.
Do you need more?
I don't anticipate it, but things do come up like town halls and road closures and events and things like that that, you know, taboos, so.
And we, we need to have an emergency meeting to, to dip into that reserve fund?
Well, if you do two times a month, we'll have sixteen eighty to play with.
Okay.
Oh, no, we're getting close.
Yeah, so it would leave us with enough to do these. Options.
Okay.
So if we do more than seven extra ads, I'll call you.
Awesome, thank you.
Sammy can send you invites on your calendar so that you know deadlines for when you're up, when you need to submit each other's sessions.
Yeah.
That would be lovely.
Who wants to use the next letter to the editor, you?
So, Andy, do you wanna do the next letter?
No, go ahead, I'm getting inspiration from you guys.
Okay. Yes.
Every six weeks, that's gonna be.
And just a reminder, those are five hundred words limit, or less.
These first ones, the second ones are five hundred to seven fifty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, any questions?
No.
No.
Okay. It's all I got for you two.
Alright, sweet, thank you Sammy for taking the lead there on agenda item number two.
Thank you, Sammy.
Moving onward, agenda item number three, excuse me, public hearing to consider the renewal of an optional premises liquor license. Number two six dash one zero one five seven dash zero 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 for Tennessee Pass Cook House Incorporated. Led by Liz Miller.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, the Tennessee Pass Cook House has requested a renewal of their optional premise license that allows them to have the sale of alcohol, um, excuse me, malt, venus and spirited liquors. Um, on their premises for consumption there, they've done all of their paperwork, both globally, with the state, gave their state fee, their local fee, and I have received no comment. So my recommendation would be to renew.
Alright, um, motion to renew.
Um, do you wanna go, Matt?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to renew the liquor license at Tennessee Pass Cook House.
Seconded.
Alright, to a vote?
Aye.
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 Alright, sweet. All set there, agenda item number four. Discussion and consideration of an amendment to the professional services agreement with SE Group for additional services related to the Harrison Park Master Plan. Led by Jackie Wellahan. Go ahead, Jackie.
Thank you, um, so the idea is that this was on your agenda during that's regular meeting, SE Group was elected to conduct the master plan of the Harrison Park site. And today we're considering the amendment, uh, to the PSA for additional coordination time related to the second open house. Timeline extension of the project to August first, and then the second open house itself, material modification survey, survey result memo, et cetera. And traffic study, additional costs of six thousand dollars, advertising costs for the survey and the second open house. So a total amendment to the PSA of sixteen thousand two hundred dollars, raising the overall contract to two hundred and five thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. And Gabby is here with us today, if you have any questions, I had added, um, unfortunately at the very last minute, all kinds of things to your teams, um, folder.
Mm-hmm.
So there's lots of stuff that we're doing here.
Yeah, I'm happy to add some more detail to those, um, coordination items, the additional open house work has already been completed and was requested by the previous Commissioners. And I added up basically hours on our time sheets, um, of how much work, uh, how much time that took. And that was that thirty, thirty-five hundred, thirty-six hundred, thirty-five hundred, and then the coordination time for the timeline extension is an estimate of additional eight hours a month of coordination time amongst the team, probably mostly myself, sometimes additional staff person. That's an estimate of additional coordination time, which may be coordination with county staff, coordination with the one community project, coordination with the school district, some of which has already happened. Um, and in the previous scope of work, we had had a really crunched timeline, cause we were trying to get everything done by now.
Mm-hmm.
And so, knowing that we've had all these additional needs for coordination, that's my estimate for coordination needs for additional four-month timeline. Um, I think that's it, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Um, I think it was last regular meeting that we had questions, um, about the amendment to the professional services agreement. And then the breakdown, um, we were just looking for some explanation, uh, a little bit of a deeper dive into the breakdown on the amendment. Um, and the additional costs there, so, um, we got the, I feel like we had this last week and we had questions to it, but we got it resent to us again today. And, you know, I'll just be honest, we had a lot of questions and we didn't get anything until the last minute. It seems like, if that's what I was seeing on my end, um, I didn't get emails back about any of this until this morning, which isn't really enough time for me to feel comfortable diving through and even coming up with the right questions, because, um, you know, like some of this stuff showed up at eleven fif, or ten fifty-nine. And the meeting started at eleven, you know, um, you, things like, you, can you get into more detail about an additional six thousand dollars from the transportation engineer cost estimate?
Um, I can, I have, I, I provided everything to Jackie, you know, about a month ago whenever we were coming up with that amendment, so I'm not really sure how the additional detail breakdown didn't arrive. But, um, the additional, so, in the original budget, we had estimated twenty thousand dollars for the traffic study. And when we proposed on this back around Thanksgiving of last year, and so then when we started doing the actual contracting with the traffic engineer. Um, they originally came in at thirty and I cut their scope down to the bare minimum of what we needed and we ended up around twenty-six. So, it was, it was about six thousand dollars over our original estimate. Um, I do want, I think it is worth reminding you all that this is all a hundred percent grant funded money. Um, and so if it's, it's gonna go to one housing project or another housing project, um, under Jackie's budget, so I don't know if you have any more details you wanna talk about that, but it's all grant dollars.
It's, it's in the monologues.
Okay.
Well, those are still taxed up dollars and, uh, my issue with it is that we just got the information and, you know, whether there was miscommunication between you and Jackie, I don't know, but. And then the other thing is, a change order is always gets signed and agreed upon in advance, not after the fact, and so. You know, I need more information, I would, I would be willing to table this until we get more information, perhaps have a one-on-one meeting with you to understand what you're doing here and and why the previous board didn't consent to this, or get a signed change order with them, so.
Well, I mean, I can answer that, that is that, there was basically no meet, we made a last-minute decision around Christmas to hold an additional meeting.
Alright. Go ahead.
And there were no VOCC meetings to do that, and I put my trust that I would be paid for that work that I already completed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's not that much money, but it is something that I, you know, so this is my community, I trust that that, I'll get paid for that work. And so the other option we have here is that there's a lot of our engineering budget and architecture budget that hasn't been spent.
Mm-hmm.
And I've communicated with our architect and our engineer about corners they can cut and we will have a less high, lower quality final deliverable at the end of this project, but they are willing to cut money out of their design fees and cost estimation and engineering fees in order to make sure all this coordination work is done, because if this change order doesn't pass, I'm not gonna work on this project till I feel like I'm gonna get paid for the work I'm doing. And it's gonna come from somewhere, it's either gonna, we're gonna have worse traffic study, we're gonna have worse cost estimations, or we're gonna have worse design products. So, I mean, there's, the money's gonna come from somewhere in the budget and I'm not really comfortable continuing to work on this project until I feel like I'm gonna get paid for the work that I'm doing and the work that I've actually already did in the month of January that I haven't been paid for yet.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, that's, that's all I really have to, to say.
We understand that, we're just trying to also understand where the money comes from, we're all new at this.
Yeah.
We certainly don't want you to work for free.
Yeah.
But we wanna understand it more and to get emails, you know, a few minutes before the meeting isn't helping us to understand.
Right. Right, well, Jackie asked me to provide additional documentation right before the meeting, I had already, every single invoice has detailed comments of every minute and every hour spent on this project. Every invoice has, um, receipts of every expense related to this project, mostly she needs that for DOLA documentation, but if that's helpful for transparency purposes, or you understanding what the money is being spent on, that's all available.
Okay.
We're not trying to hide anything from you, I'm focused.
We understand that, we just don't, uh, you know, we're new at this too, so.
Right, yeah.
We definitely want you to get paid for the work you've done, is, can we take it out of the existing budget and then look at, look at the budget down the road with the architects, say it doesn't get that far and we don't need.
Correct, yeah, that's definitely an option, so I could basically shortchange their fee for now, just reduce it.
Well, then, how much work have they done, cause if we.
I'd have to look, but I think maybe Shape has done six or eight thousand and the engineer is kind of waiting for any draft plan to be done. So the bulk of the engineer's budget has not occurred yet, because Morgan is local and he's been doing a lot of the coordination with me, they've spent, I think, six or eight thousand dollars so far.
And this engineer is what kind of engineer?
A civil engineer to help us with understanding the, um, utility extensions and the grading and dirt moving that would need to be done and any, you know, sidewalk infrastructure, road circulation, that kind of thing.
And how much work has Shape done on the, on the construction drawings?
They, um, were mostly doing site plan and they did some of those elevation drawings and they've helped with the charrette, so they've done about six to eight thousand dollars worth of work on preliminary site plan and kind of understanding the potential layout.
Yeah, I guess like, you know, no one's trying to like throw anyone under the bus here, but I think we got handed the reins to this thing and we're not like super clear on where it's going and, and in the details of it.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what we were asking a little for help with at the last meeting.
Right. Yeah.
Um, and so I guess I'm continuing to ask for help with that again, cause I'm still not super clear on a lot of the details, I think.
Okay. Okay.
You know, it's, feels like it's, uh, shared by, you know, other members here, so. I'd like help in understanding the breakdowns and, you know, maybe just be able to sit down with you guys sometime and talk through some of this stuff. Um, I don't, yeah, I, I, I would like to know more.
I, I feel like understanding the project, understanding the players and understanding the timeline is all very legit. And I also feel that not, that, um, I feel like it's our duty to make sure that the transition between the last VOCC and this VOCC is smooth. And it feels like this is getting caught up in that and it's not smooth, so it was approved by this body, even though there are different people representing this body now. And I do not want to see this extension of the con, of the payment and contract to get caught in that transition. I would definitely move towards approving this, work that has already been done, the decisions that have already been made about the project extensions, that we can ensure that the quality is there throughout the project, so that the trust is there throughout the project, the relationship building is there. And, and there, I don't feel like there's harm in us approving payment for the work already done. If, I also feel like it's our duty to not just sit and wait to receive information, but if we have questions about things that are on our agenda time after time, it's also our job to like get our answers met, our answers, our questions answered. So I personally feel fine moving forward with this, and if we as a board want to have more questions, more conversations about the project as a whole, that is super legit. Because this is very near to all three of us, but this little part of it does not feel like a place where it's important for us to get hung up on, that's my take.
Those are very good points, Elsa, I'd, I'd like to suggest that we take it out of the current budget and that we. The next change order, maybe the engineer or the architects say, you know, they're gonna need more money, so I don't know how that would work, but, uh.
But that, but that, that work has already been approved, so this is the work that was approved, but the payment was not approved.
Yeah.
So just like logistically.
Some of it, it's part, it's a little bit of, part of it, part, it's a little bit, yeah.
Part, part, excuse me, you're right, you're right, um, the, so just like, order of operations wise, it will look as though we are approving extra engineering costs to the project, when we're not, we would just be slotting this work, we would be, we would be asking. We would be, we would be asking the project to absorb this work. And then it would look like we're asking for more engineering costs when really we've just punted that payment down the road. And I just don't think that will look good. The more times this project comes up on the. Comes up on our agenda asking for more money, I think people will get confused about that.
Well, and this, the money, the original contract hasn't all been spent, so if you're looking for ways to pull back. Or say this project didn't get approved at all and we don't need architectural.
Right.
Then that money won't be spent. Is that right?
Right.
But it's all, yeah, and it's also a grant and I do think that it's fair that yes, it's taxpayer dollars, but it's not. Like county's taxpayer dollars and the work that's been done is, was requested and valuable for our community. It's not like it was, we're not just like. This isn't like our nation's taxpayer dollars being wasted. Our community asked for this work to be done. So I don't, don't quite understand where this specific part of this project. It feels like it's getting the weight of the entire project and that feels kind of off to me.
Yeah, maybe you're right. I just don't like it to build after, you know, in my business, change orders.
Legit.
Agreed. I don't like it either. I am reminded, and a couple, this is like the second or third time, you know, this is a really scary position. And where, you know, you don't like, you do the work and then you hope you're gonna get paid for it afterwards and I don't do this very often.
Yeah.
Um, to just say one other thing, that I think the first line, that additional in coordination time is maybe the one that has the most. Hang up and you know, I estimated eight hours a month for four months. We may not need all of that.
Mm-hmm.
So if it's helpful for me to whip my monthly invoices clearly document. Whether I use that additional coordination time and we don't use up all that budget, maybe in. April, it's only two hours and then maybe in May it's four hours and then maybe in June it's six hours, whatever it is, that's just an estimate of the future.
Mm.
Additional coordination time over those four months and we might not use that or not, but I just didn't wanna come back.
Yeah.
And ask for like, oh, can we apply hundred more dollars? We ended up having two more meetings, you know, something like that. And so.
Yeah.
I'm happy to be extremely transparent about what that, those hours are used on even more so than a regular invoice. I don't know if that's helpful.
I would love that.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Okay.
I appreciate that what you're trying to do is build in the grant to actually fit.
Mm-hmm.
The potential needs.
Right.
So that we don't have to have this conversation again. I really just appreciate it.
And I think honestly with us delaying the project so that the community builders, one community project. Those have been really positive collaborations. They're talking about what is the best conversation for our community to have now. Versus are we ready to really talk about this one specific project when we're still having this high level community conversation?
Mm-hmm.
And I think there's been a lot of value from that additional school district coordination. Um, around Twelfth Street and Harrison, kind of that intersection. It's been really valuable to have coordination with the community builders team, additional meetings with Melissa and Lauren and Jackie and Michael to just like. Make sure all the housing projects are on the same page. It's been really valuable time. We just didn't necessarily anticipate all of that. When we wrote the original scope report, cause we didn't know all the different things that were happening until we started getting involved in the project.
Yeah. We're not actually paying out this, I mean, we are paying you. Yes, but, but just so that it's contextual for the public also, we're in, we're approving an extent, like a. An enlarging of the grant. As opposed to saying this additional cost, we will now foot. Just to be clear, this is not coming from our general.
Am I getting this wrong where I'm looking at this grant as a pie and we're divvying up the slices right now, like even how, no matter how skinny. And it's like figuring out where, I'm not saying we shouldn't be paying anyone for work that's already been done. The only thing that I'm asking is that as. Stuff is taken on, moving forward, that we get educated to be made aware of. Okay, here's what we're looking at next. This is estimated to cost this much before, I feel like we're kind of getting. Like you're already done the work and have been paid, so it's like, you know, well, we have to pay you for that. I don't want that to happen again. I would. Want to be able to understand what's happening moving forward before the work is done, so that we can. Have the option of being like, I don't know if this is the best idea or you know, have more input, have more collaboration and more communication about it. So the, the missing element for me has been the communication, I guess. Cause again, I'm not super well versed in this. I'm trying to learn a million different things at once and. This is something I'm asking for help to get more information on as best I can.
Well, this is the, this is where the communication between the previous B O C C and this B O C C has broken down. Cause like Matt said, this change order happened without approving the funding for the work to be done. And that's not how any of us want to move forward, totally agree, but it's caught in the transition.
We were trying to move quickly over the holidays and have, you know, I had staff that were working. Over Christmas to get that second, you know, whatever that, that kind of dead week when all offices are closed. And there just wasn't a meeting in that time.
What was the impetus for that second meeting? Is that a B O C C thing or just pressure from the community or?
Wish Jackie, Jackie just left.
You were never, I remember why we chose.
We had an open house to have a second, yeah, we had an open house at the uh, senior center on the Harrison Park project. And got a lot of feedback, but didn't feel like we got enough feedback from employers for in the community. Correct. Uh, who are very reliant on affordable housing, attainable housing, and so we had a specific open house for additional community feedback and. In particular hosted it with the chamber and the E D C so that we have that employer perspective. And we created a survey that was sent out to all the major employers. Um, and there were a lot of people that had, over two hundred people that had ten minutes to take a survey. They didn't have an hour to come to a meeting and I think both were good. Menus to get feedback, whether people had a couple of minutes to take a survey or show up.
Yeah. Well, I will move to approve an amendment to the P S A with S E group. For additional services related to the Harrison Park master plan. And then just a reminder, you just seconded and then we can have more discussion and then we vote, you don't have to vote in favor.
I'll second.
Yeah.
So this amendment is making sure that people are getting paid for the work they've already done.
And, and building in the potential costs, that first line. That first line is the potential cost that Gabby has estimated, that the additional coordination to slow this project down and be in, in line with. The one community project, it happens. And she also said that that's just an estimation, so that we don't have to have this conversation again. And she's happy to keep track of that to see if it was accurate and in every month's memo, there'll be a clear. She'll, she'll clearly keep that separate to show whether she's actually used her anticipated time or not. So it could be less than that. That's just her saying, hey, can we build in this flex to the grant? So that I can make sure that this still happens.
Well, I understand that you're under pressure to do this work, so I'm gonna have to uh. Relax and, and change my mind because I hate doing work and not getting paid for it. And I know it's stressful, but going forward, we can't do any work. I would suggest we take a look at this whole thing closer since there isn't much communication from the old board to us and uh, you know. And I'm guilty of not really taking a deep dive from it, so. I'm ready to vote.
Yeah, um. Yeah, this is, I guess, you know, it's already water under the bridge, I guess, so to speak at this point. I would just like to be more, more informed moving forward and yeah, but like Matt said, some of the burden lies on us, but I'm also asking for help. Graciously, please to help me understand more of why these cost breakdowns are, are the way they are. What is going to happen next so that it's not, so that no one's doing work and then waiting to get paid. So yeah, take that to a vote.
Aye.
We already.
I moved to approve it.
I.
Second.
No, we alre- I already moved.
You already moved.
We seconded, we discussed, now we vote.
Oh, Robert's so disappointed in my roles right now.
You got it. I was terribly impressed.
Okay, so you said aye?
Aye, and so yeah.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, Gabby.
Yeah, I'm happy to sit down and go over the entire scope of work and budget for the project or whenever that works for you, cause we are in a little bit of a lull.
That would be really helpful.
I'm happy to, maybe we can set that up with Jackie at some point.
Awesome.
Okay.
Can we do that one-on-one, Jackie, as opposed to in here?
Yes.
Is that the question?
Yeah, yeah. We can set that up.
Okay. Moving on, uh, agenda item number five, discussion and consideration of a contract renewal with Patagonia Health for a continued. Electronic charting software service, excuse me, for public health led by Julia Johansson.
Hi there. Yep. Hopefully this is easy and straightforward, so um, because we provide clinical services, we have a electronic charting system. This is pretty standard. It's called Patagonia. We've had it for a few years. We have to renew the contract every single year around this time and. Um, this has been budgeted for and essentially this is how we chart the services that we provide and then this is also how we are able to charge for the services that we provide. And we actually worked pretty hard with Patagonia this year to decrease um, any services that this software provided that was not essential. And we're able to decrease our monthly cost pretty significantly for this contract. Um, and again, this contract was sent in beforehand to legal to review. Uh, to make any changes or modify anything, so this, what this is, you know, I mean, as far as legal thinks the new contract looks okay.
I have no questions.
Nor do I.
Nor I. Um, motion to approve. Um. The continued, oh. Oh, motion to approve continued electronic charting software service for public health with Patagonia.
I'll second.
All right, to a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
I was kind of rusty.
I know.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you, Julia.
Thank you. All right, agenda item number six, discussion and consideration of individual project order. Number zero one with Kim Lee Horn under the master agreement. For continuing professional services for engineering services related to the county road five A and Lake Fork Creek Bridge replacement. Led by Michael Irwin.
So this is um, a contract to do the engineering on the five A bridge. Um, I thought it was already in place, but I was told by them it was not. And I'm not sure if we didn't discuss it in here and we just didn't get it signed. I'm not sure what happened to it. But I also need to have an update that it's about twenty grand less than it was before. Because they found out they don't have to do all of the um. Work with the Army Corps of Engineers, we're required for this new process and we can, I don't know if you've seen it, but. On the north side of it towards Sturgway Lake, it's holding a lot of water back.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so once we drain that, you know, we're disturbing by land, but we already have the structure there. They're okay that we don't have to do all that stuff.
Yes.
So we're gonna take that out of, out of the plan. Um, so it's, it's just for the engineering services and we do have a five-year master agreement with them in June next year. So hopefully we can get bridges done and it is in the budget this year. That's for these bridges because it's a grant. Um, through the N R D funds, we only have to pay for the engineering stuff. They will not pay for that. They will pay for the structure and any other type of stuff.
Sweet, well, we know, know this bridge needs fixing, so I don't have any questions with this. Stoked that it's gonna cost less than, you know. But yeah, so the engineering aspect needs to happen first. No, nothing for me.
No questions.
Who's turn?
Oh, uh. Yeah.
It's my turn. Um, okay, I move to approve the I P O number zero one with Kim Lee Horn. Under the master agreement for continuing professional services for engineering services related to the C R five A and Lake Fork Creek Bridge replacement.
I'll second the motion.
All right, to a vote?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
All right, agenda item seven, discussion and consideration for approval of the disposition of assets. Specifically sheriff's office vehicles that were leased purchased in twenty twenty that are up for replacement led by Mr. Michael Irwin.
So on this one, um, they do have trucks that are basically end of life according to our five-year plan. Um, but I had a meeting with Sheriff Beckman and he's got other vehicles that need to get rid of first that are older. And these ones still need to be on um, the highways. They still need, they're still patrol vehicles. So anything that's not a patrol vehicle, um, he wants to go ahead and get rid of. So I got a list of that that I can supply you with. Order to the B O C C there or whatever. But they're older ones, the twenty fourteen up to twenty eighteen, so.
Okay. Um, so we're not selling the twenty twenties just yet, just some of the older ones. Okay.
As, as the new Tows come in, these ones will go out.
Yeah. How, how beat up do these things get over four years, I think, Sheriff?
Yeah, they're, so our W's do have take-home vehicles, um, but during their work cycles, uh, pretty much ten hours a day, they're man, non-stump. Um, so a lot of hours.
Yeah.
Where they're at or driving. And from a mileage standpoint, it's not terrible, so that helps with the resale, is that you're able to keep more smaller cannes, you know, uh, driving.
Yeah.
Retail standpoint, they.
The odometer looks good, but there's been a lot of idle hours. You know, the thing's running, but the wheels aren't turning. Got it. Cool. Uh, I have no other questions about that. Uh, could you get me an email of the list?
Yeah, I'll forward that to you.
Sweet.
Thanks. What should I want for?
Yeah, cause I think we can, if the board wants to move forward with this motion, then Michael and Sheriff know that. The disposition of the F one fifties can happen as the Tows come in and then we can get the, the list for the other vehicles to the board as well. If that works for you.
It works, yeah.
So also in the future, just so you know, we do have other equipment that will be coming out soon. What we have in our yard, that has not been approved to sell. I'll come back to you with those too. Do you have approval, I have to give you all approval to sell it.
Okay.
Cause you are the owners.
Yes.
Just a clarification, here's to need to know whether these funds would be positive, as in. I mean, I would recommend that they go back into the fleet, so that it's less general fund, the money we sell it for would go back into purchasing vehicles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we wanted a vehicle management plan.
Yeah. Yeah.
Agreed. Michael, what in the vehicle management plan is the selling part of the asset management? Or is it just like the acquisition and maintenance of our fleet?
Um, so with Enterprise, when we get the vehicle five years from now, they will take, they will take it back for a new vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
And we keep all of, um, what's it called? Basically, anything that, the value of that vehicle, it goes back, you get that taken off the new vehicle.
Yeah.
Um, there's a few vehicles that we have purchased through them or got through them that will probably never meet that goal. Of actually making some money back on it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just because of some of the outfit stuff, like in the corner van.
Mm-hmm.
It overpriced everything, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We got way more into those and.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of the specialized vehicles for sure.
But the selling of these non-leased vehicles is what I mean, like that, that income, we can call it income.
Yeah.
Is that, has that been built into the vehicle management plan?
Not yet, it, but it has dawned into, um, like if it's a road bridge vehicle, it goes back into that fund.
Yeah.
But we can't put it into the vehicle fund.
Cool. So it's like cherry on top.
Yeah, as long as we start that fund.
She's got it. She knows.
Michael, how many?
Sorry.
No, my bad.
Um, how many, what's the, uh, what's the benefit of leasing a truck versus purchasing? Don't you just have to give it back with? Whereas purchasing, there might be a ten thousand dollar value left on those pickups, maybe fifteen?
Yeah, but when we do give it back, whatever's left.
Oh, I see.
The value goes onto the new one.
Okay.
Or we keep that built up, even if we give it back without purchasing a new one.
Even though it's a lease. It, even though it's basically a rental.
Yeah. That's what they tell me and if you guys would like to meet with Enterprise and have more questions from them.
Yeah, I think we wanted to meet with you guys without Enterprise because, you know, I'm not saying they aren't providing us a good service, but they're also like the salesmen, you know, like.
Right, I know.
So I'd like to, you know, at some point be able to sit down with you guys and kind of talk more about, you know, some of the nuts and bolts of like how our whole vehicle system works.
I think we have a meeting.
Yeah.
Do we have that ready to go? Okay, cool, thanks.
Yeah.
So we staff first and then Enterprise.
Okay. Awesome, sweet, thanks for setting that up. So we've been asking about that.
When's that military vehicle going to come up for an auction?
Keep it there.
It's gone already.
Well.
Missed your opportunity.
You're gonna put a plow on it.
We have the tracks on.
Yeah. Cool, yeah, I don't have any other questions about that. Um, okay.
I move, uh, to approve, um.
Disposition.
Why don't you take this one?
Number seven.
Yeah, I moved to appro- uh, approve the disposition of assets, specifically the Sheriff's Office vehicles that were leased or purchased in two thousand and twenty and they're up for replacement.
Seconded. Can I ask a quick question? Yes, thank you.
Of course.
Sorry, Michael, what happens to all this stuff that gets, that gets outfitted into these sheriff vehicles or are they a specific sheriff vehicle that we're leasing?
So we're going to offer them first to only law enforcement or emergency services that can use that stuff. So that would bring up the price hopefully.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if not, then we'll have to take all that out and sell the vehicle without it.
Okay, and then do we just, do we re-outfit the new ones or is it kind of outfitted?
We can try to sell that, that stuff also, but it won't fit the new vehicles.
Oh yeah, duh. Just so I understand, but Enterprise, do, do they lease it outfitted or are we, do we have a separate purchase to outfit vehicles?
Yes and no.
Okay.
So when we get the new vehicles, any of the cost of, of the outfit.
Yeah.
Um, we have to pay fifty percent of that upfront.
Okay.
And then the rest of it goes on the lease.
Okay.
So yes, we do pay for that throughout the whole thing.
Nice.
But it's not.
But it's amortized.
Yeah.
That's nice.
It's not all at one time.
Most domestic manufacturers provide vehicle options that are ready for outfitting, so it's like, you know, taking a passenger car and trying to put radars and lights and everything on.
Yeah, so they, and they, they come all ready to plug in to like living place.
Yeah.
That's awesome. Thank you, Cam.
Cool, uh, to a vote?
Aye.
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 Alright. Thanks Mark.
Thank you Mike.
Alright, number eight, agenda item eight, thank you. Oh, discussion and consideration, uh, that door will jump out at you if you're trying to walk out of the trim. I've seen it happen. It moves. Um, agenda item number eight, discussion and consideration of an abatement of taxes for account number R zero zero three five eight one in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred dollars and ninety four cents. Led by Sherry Popovich.
Yeah, Mark's in a meeting with the camera guys.
Gotcha.
So I don't know if you got the other one in time. We have two abatements.
Yes, yes.
We did.
Yeah, we definitely.
Okay, so we're doing this one flag green subdivision. This is, I just need to get approval of the abatement because it is over ten thousand. There was a stipulation done back in. Uh, twenty-three that stipulated, and I think I gave you guys all that paperwork when I put in the, uh, the quest.
Mm-hmm.
So did you get a chance to look it all over?
I did not, I just line for line into it. I skimmed over it.
So basically, the stipulation stated in twenty-three, the property had to be valued at this certain dollar amount. Twenty-three was reassessment year. Those values had to stick for two thousand and twenty-four. It, I don't know what happened. I have my suspicions, but that stipulation got overran.
Yeah.
By an employee.
Yeah.
And the value of the property went above what was stipulated. Now stipulation, of course, is in order that says it must stay. So that's why this one's over ten thousand dollars. Because she got a tax bill, I think, for thirteen thousand dollars or something and she was only supposed to get a tax bill for like three grand.
Yeah.
So that's the first one. Okay, so I just need to get approval by the county commissioners. Um, you have to, and the clerk needs to sign off on the petition for abatement. And then I have to send it to the state of Colorado, the DPT, so the PTA can sign it as well.
Okay, motion.
Don't you love that pronouns?
Yeah.
Fun.
Yeah.
Motion for a, abatement of taxes for account number R zero zero three five eight one.
Are you asking for that?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I move.
Alright. Might I have to do the first one and then I'll see the second one or is that you guys?
You are, but it's better if we do it.
Yeah.
It's better if the chair is not moving.
Okay, alright, so.
Okay, I'm gonna move to approve the abatement of taxes for account number R zero zero three five eight one in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred dollars and ninety four cents.
I'll second.
Alright, to a vote?
Aye.
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 Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, alright, agenda item number nine, discussion and consideration of an abatement of taxes for account number R zero zero seven zero seven one. In the amount of twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and nine, and sixty cents led by Sherry Popovich.
Okay, this one is Dr. But, Lisa's building that the public health is using. I sent you all the paperwork on that one too, according to state statute. Once we leased it as a county, it is now tax exempt.
Yeah.
And guys, I fought this one. I went to the DPT, I made sure. Because in my mind, twenty-seven thousand dollars out of general fund reimbursement is breaking my heart as a citizen and as an assessor. I am just like, really, who didn't catch this? And to top it all off, when the lease went into effect in September of two thousand and four. Those taxes for two thousand and four.
Two thousand.
Two thousand and three, sorry. Should have been prorated and, and the exemption put on there.
Yeah.
I don't know what happened there. I got, I wasn't here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright? But we ended up, because it was two thousand and twenty-three, doing abatement for those taxes with interest. To Dr. Lisa for thirteen thousand dollars. And if, I'm sorry guys, I don't know what or where that error happened and who didn't catch it when that. But I've kind, I'm, I just need you guys to agree to it so I can get it to the state. And just so you know, I'm trying to put into place, I have my time transfer clerk now going through all of I County every day. Even though the statute clearly reads, when the county does a lease like this, they must be providing to the, uh, the assessor a copy of that lease. It's not my staff's job or my job to go through Y County and look at every document that gets recorded. But I have my transfer clerk doing it now so that we can stop this disaster, okay? Now I've got one more that's out there that's gonna have to have the same problem. And as soon as I do mine, and it's all because of statute.
Okay.
And it's all because, guys, they're, yeah.
We're saying it was safe, it was twenty-three.
That's a state law.
It's a statute, it's thirty-nine, three dash one twenty-four.
Where's the, where, Tim, where's the like? Systems breakdown that doesn't get that information to the assessor?
Great question. Um, it is now repaired because Sherry and I sit next to each other, um.
And Sherry gets really grumpy.
Um, but I think also just understanding, um, of those statutes and what needs to go to the assessor's office, I think also the transition of the assessor.
Yeah.
I think just a whole host of things in twenty-three played, uh, an issue on that, but now we know, so. Legal knows, you know, finance staff knows right as things go through, like if it is a county lease for a property in Lake County.
Mm-hmm.
It's gotta go to Mark's office.
Will that be included in the finance policies update?
I can't, if you want it, is there?
It'd be awesome, just so that it's like really codified and not like dependent on people, but built into the system feels important.
Yeah.
It does.
Put multiple safety nets to keep this from happening again, you know, I mean, this is two years ago, uh, nothing we can do about it now, but.
We are abating two thousand and twenty-four's taxes.
Yeah.
That's the twenty-seven thousand dollar one.
Yeah.
Which thank God, I don't think she's paid it. So it's just a dollar, it's just a, it's kind of a debit credit kind of thing, it goes away.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, but to talk about her excitement about getting a check from the treasurer's office.
Yeah, as I, as I understand it, she was surprised that she didn't have, that she didn't even know about that. That should be reflected in the lease terms. She's saving that much money for the year.
Well, there, there is a provision in the lease that essentially says that, that the county takes that split to be exempt, so it is addressed in the lease and it's just that butch. You know, for legal, once we finish with our part of it and it's processed.
Mm-hmm.
That's the end of our meeting with it, if you will, and so now with the processes, Commissioner Ellison's asking to have it as part of the finance. Because now all contracts go to finance.
Right.
So that will help trigger for them to know that it's a lease to send power to the assessor.
Yeah.
And you guys need to know that under the statute, any lease that the county signs that is a twelve month period or longer, whether or not you have an option to purchase on it or not. It is automatically an exempt piece of property.
Really?
Which means less.
Hmm?
Yeah, probation, probation, probation on the authority.
There you go, so think about this in terms of you exempt it, that's not money going in your coffers.
Yeah, totally.
That's money taken away from the county, that's money taken away from your citizens.
The same with the state too, right? Anything that the state leases, not just the counties.
It's a state. It's a state statute. Yeah.
Yeah.
So the statute reads the state of Colorado, any of its subdivision affiliations, subdivision basically means you guys.
Yeah, 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 as in our own state.
Well, that could be addressed in the lease negotiations.
And that's true, it should be, it should be addressed because the rent is based off you guys assuming that she's gotta pay the usual stuff.
Yeah, Chris, didn't you bring that up?
Taxes, shirts, and stuff.
And it was.
Yeah, it is, the, the thing is, is that it's a commercial lease, so it's a triple net lease, meaning that all expenses that the, or the property pays are passed through to the tenant. And so that's not, that it's, there's no deduction, like the, the rent isn't deducted for stuff she doesn't have to pay. So since we don't have to pay the taxes, then.
Yeah.
We don't have to reduce the rent.
Yeah, okay.
So.
That's wild.
It's covered.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
I'm really disgusted actually. Oh, I get that.
As to what was in this later.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's actually really expensive for us to rent facilities for county units.
We do have a work session in a month and a half to talk about this lease and if you do want to move or purchase in the buildings.
Okay.
For Canada.
Isn't it?
Yes.
Love it. Sherry, thank you so much for bringing this up.
No problem, the abatement needs to be signed in triplicate, so who's gonna sign it?
Who's gonna? Don't worry.
He's on number nine.
Oh, good.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the abatement of taxes for account number R zero zero seven zero seven one. Now twenty-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty cents.
Seconded.
To a vote?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you guys, I'll get the paperwork done and.
Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you guys for all your hard work and helping us, the county get better at this stuff.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number ten, discussion and consideration of extending the sign moratorium until April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. By recommendation from the planning commission led by Ann Schneider.
Um, I would say there's a little bit of an air in, uh, the agenda. It's, it's, um, we're asking to extend it to only second.
Wait a second, okay, noted.
Um, and, and just due to circumstances, um, that we didn't have a forum for the public hearing. Excuse me, just gonna, sorry. Um, on our previously, um, uh, scheduled meeting for, uh, the sign moratorium, we have moved the public hearing until Monday the twenty-fourth. And, um, but the, um, moratorium was expiring, um, on, um, the nineteenth, um, tomorrow. So this extends it to allow for the public hearing and then for the recommendation of the planning commission to be brought forward to you. And for you to determine whether or not you will, um, adopt the new regulations around sign code. So, um, we would just be looking for a motion, um, to reference the resolution by title, um, to extend. Happy to answer any questions about that.
My other question is, didn't we see this on an agenda as the sign? Or were we looking at the planning commission agenda? I thought there was a discussion piece for the sign code.
As are the upcoming planning commission.
It was the, just wanted to double check, it was the planning commission, okay.
So the new, yeah.
Yeah, got it.
The twenty-fourth's planning commission, um, agenda has the public hearing scheduled for the twenty-fourth.
Got it. I have no questions.
Full clarity, we dropped the ball on this one, didn't we? I just wanna own it if we did and, and we'll come up with a plan to make sure that that doesn't happen again. I apologize.
We didn't have any commissioners present.
Um, and we will do our, we will, we'll do better, so sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, also, you know, we're, I think we've got on the schedule, um, some one-on-ones just to discuss the plan G's process and decisions and things like that. So I think it'd be really beneficial, um, our, our subject matter can get a little complex. And so really looking forward to those kind of one-on-ones and answering about developments with you and decision-making of the board for instance, so.
It is, it is a lot. But thank you.
This is an actual title.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, that's what I got. Oh, that makes it easier.
If you put it out there.
Me too.
Read the whole thing? Is this the title?
I'll apply the title.
You can edit the title, so you don't have to read the whole thing.
Wait, when I'm, okay. So I'm moving this?
Yeah.
Motion move.
Move to approve the resolution.
Okay. Motion, oh, yeah, sorry, that's on my tab.
I'm gonna move to approve the resolution, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero nine. A resolution extending the temporary moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing and approval of any new sign permit application.
I'll second the motion.
To a vote?
Aye.
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 Alright, yes, um, I think moving.
Sorry about that, Ed.
We're, we're gonna like take turns each having like the mandatory, so one of us knows. And this could have been on me, maybe it was my turn and we, we already did this, I didn't know, but.
No, I planned to get everyone, I was just out of the state.
Yeah.
It's all sort of.
Yeah, so we'll just take turns of like, you know, I know some of the.
Remind each other.
Yeah, like, hey, this is your week that you mandatorily have to get PC meeting. And we'll just make sure we kind of rotate and if somebody has something come up, we can pass off or whatever, but, um, yeah. Um, I, I would like help with that.
Yes.
From you guys, thank you. Okay. Uh, moving on, agenda item number eleven. Uh, discussion and consideration for the approval of land use file number twenty-four dash forty-five, a conditional use permit request. For an accessory dwelling unit at one sixty Peak View Drive led by C.C. Williams.
Thank you. Um, so this was a conditional use permit application for an A D U or an accessory dwelling unit. And so I will go ahead and read the planning commission's statement of motion for file number twenty-four dash forty-five. At its February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five joint public hearing, the Lake County Planning Commission unanimously, unanimously approved with five members of favor, the following motion. The motion was made by David Jurich and seconded by Jason Ruffo. I move that the planning commission recommend conditional approval to the Board of County Commissioners of file twenty-four dash forty-five. Conditional use permit application for an accessory dwelling unit on a parcel of land less than one acre at one sixty Peak View Drive, Twin Lakes, Colorado eight one two five one. Pursuant to the standards of section five point three point one B. Planning Commission further finds that the approval criteria pursuant to section three point six point one F have been met as evidenced in the staff report dated February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five for file twenty-four dash forty-five. The condition of approval is, one, all statements made by the applicant in the application and hearing shall be considered conditions of approval. So happy to answer any questions. Um, thank you.
I have no questions.
No questions.
Nor do I.
Alright.
Sherry, do you wanna do it?
Sure. Uh, I will move to approve the land use file twenty-four dash forty-five, a conditional use permit request. For an accessory dwelling unit at one sixty Peak View Drive.
Seconded.
To a vote?
Aye.
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 Yeah, there's some clarity, um, could you make your motion based on the recommendation from the planning commission? Cause there was one condition of approval, and that was just a pre-approval, so, um, I'm sorry, didn't catch it.
So the motion to approve on the condition of the grant, recommendation, okay.
The recommendation. Yeah, cause there was one condition.
So, should we do that over?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Discussion, or, excuse me, I move to approve, uh, land use file twenty four dash forty five, a conditional use permit request for an accessory dwelling unit at one sixty Peak View Drive based on the recommendations of the planning commissions and the adherence of all the stipulations to the planning commission's recommendation.
Seconded. Seconded.
That was wonderful.
I added that one.
Really tidy.
Okay, two way vote.
Aye.
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 All right.
Wow.
Nicely done.
Should be writing our agendas now, professional.
Yeah, that little, little touch at the end.
Yeah.
Totally tied the room together.
Exactly. Totally had the, the carpet really ties the room together.
Yeah. Okay, agenda item number twelve. Discussion and consideration of a P S A with Short Elliott Hendrickson Incorporated, S E H for short, for professional engineering support, led by Ann Schneider.
Thank you so much, and I will say, kind of the delay in getting this on your agenda was a little bit of mine of sending it to legal and not through the professional services. We changed our, our, kind of our procedure and, and, um, letting legal know that we had, uh, professional service agreements that needed to be updated, so we're a little bit further in the year. Um, and that was, uh, uh, mine in not going through the new po, uh, procedure that we established this, this year. Um, however, this is a standing relationship that we've had with the, uh, Pia, uh, with S E H. Um, they are a national firm, uh, but, but land use has been using them as the land use engineers for decades. Predates my, um, tenure with the, um, department. And the only modification really in their scope of services is that right now they are providing backup support on septic systems or W T S, um, engineer review. Um, while we have a vacancy on our environmental health specialist position, um, that we are gonna be actively recruiting for. But they have increased that within the scope. Uh, so it's just extending, uh, their annual, um, professional service agreement with us. And we'd be looking for a motion to approve our contract with them on an annual basis and need legal review. Um, and, uh, so that's, that's what we're asking for today.
It is, it is.
I was gonna say, I thought we already reviewed it.
Oh, have we already, oh.
So I don't think, we don't have to have. So we will just be looking for a motion to approve.
I have no questions.
Nor do I. These, these are for a year at a time?
Yeah, it's on an annual basis.
Yeah. Um, you know, it is, maybe it's a subject for a different day, but while it's here and it's in my head. Do you think, uh, we're spending more on, uh, S E H services for the septic stuff versus hiring a full-time employee to do it? What do you think's gonna save the county no money?
So I would say I haven't expended any money with them yet. There is a variance application that has been submitted, that I have submitted for their review, so that is really the only, um, application so far that's had to go to their review. Um, I, we've determined that it's not a long-term solution, it's kind of a triage solution for right now, just until we can recruit and fill that position. So we're not looking to contract with them, it is kind of a temporary service that they're providing while the, the positions begin, so it won't be a long-term solution.
So it's not even an option if it were something that were more cost effective?
I think that if you wanted to go out to, um, at one part grounds engineering, a, a, a separate firm, um, used to do our inspections and project review, um, that was before, like in two thousand thirteen, before Public Health moved this out of the building department and into public health. Um, and since that time, we've always been set to, to, to do the position. And so that's, that's the framework that we're gonna go back to, but we will continue to determine, um, I think if, if, what that, you know, which, which approach might be more fiscally favorable, um, and, and sustainable.
Hmm.
Um, but for right now, I would say that our pathway forward is to recruit that position, and we're only looking to them for a small amount of time. The other thing that we're doing in the interim is we are putting the engineer of record on the system, all septic systems or on-site based water treatment systems in Lake County are required to be engineered. And so the engineer of record is performing the inspections, just like we did over COVID. So David Wilson, our previous employee, um, would go out and do some of those inspections. So right now, when we issue a permit, we're just putting that on our stack on the applicant to have their engineer to do those inspections.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think we've got a, kind of a good, kinda triage approach right now while we have the vacancy. And we'll be moving forward into, um, looking to, uh, reestablish kind of the framework that we've had before. We're also looking for ways to backfill this position, whether it be through, um, adding capacity at C P D or in public health eventually, um, because there is a seasonality to this position as well.
Mm-hmm.
Cool.
This is our newest, we've, we've, um, having some internal conversations, uh, with county manager and public health that's gonna be on just how to kind of frame this uh, vacancy and then how to move forward, so that's kind of where we're at.
Great. Let's get going.
Okay.
So.
I move to approve a P S A with Short Elliott Hendrickson Incorporated, S E H for professional engineering support.
I will second the motion.
Okay, to a vote?
Aye.
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 Thank you so much.
All right, thanks, Anne.
Thanks, Anne.
Okay, discussion and consideration of an amendment to the P S A with Arkansas River Watershed Collaborative, Arwick, to aid Arkansas Basin communities in addressing watershed issues for economic, ecological, and social benefits, led by Tim Bergman, county manager.
Thank you, um, I'm actually gonna turn it over to Sam and Jonathan, cause I need a point of personal privilege, but, um, so last week, um, you know, Andy and Matt were able to meet Jonathan for the work session, but we should also meet Sam, who's our, uh, local Lake County Watershed Manager, but I'll let, if you guys wanna talk through your stretches, please.
Yeah, nice to meet you, Sam Kown. Um, I apologize that I wasn't able to be here for the work session last week, it sounded like it was productive talk. Um, and we're, we're here to seek approval, uh, a decision on the amendment, um, on a series of projects happening in Lake County, um, for which we need match funding, uh, P O C C. Um, a number of those projects are, um, funded by state and other private local grants. And we are in the process of laying the groundwork, and there are, two of them are multi-year grants and two of them are single-year projects that we're working on, um. And I guess following up from the conversation from last week, uh, we just might open the floor to see if you had any further questions or other things that had come up from that session.
I'll just, um, kind of briefly go over what we talked about last week for anyone who wasn't here. Um, well, basically, the Arwick programs cover fire mitigation, um, water, uh, conservation efforts um, across a, a wide range of, of, a wide area, Lake County, and, uh, a wide, um, swath of the watershed there. Um, there's also some cleanup efforts, I think, for some, uh, problematic soils that have been deposited by high water years. Um, and I think when it breaks down, the, the amount of, uh, return we're getting out of these projects, like, insanely outpaces what we're putting into it, so it was like twenty, was it?
Twenty million?
Yeah, so it was like, we're putting in like twenty thousand dollars and getting like two point something million dollars worth of work out of it.
Mm-hmm.
So it was just like, sounded, it's pretty amazing effort you guys are doing, so I thought that was all super positive and it was a really, uh, really good work session, so that's just kind of a, my, my close notes on what we talked about last week. Um, yeah, so I don't have any questions.
I'm sorry, I don't have any questions.
Does this, uh, these, um, grants, are they in jeopardy given the current state of affairs?
Um, well, they're very secure.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would just, I mean, it's on the wall, this is part of the California Gulch cleanup.
Yeah.
And we worked with the trustees and the A G's office to bring that money to Lake County, to, to, four million from the natural resources damages. And we're matching that with another four million, including contributions from the county, so, um, that's over a five-year period, and we're at roughly year two. And we're working with Lake, though, and of course to replace six, um, jurisdictionally owned culverts, um, and bridges across the county, plus a seven that is, um, on forest service management, so. There's infrastructure, there's cleanup, there's water quality, there's fire mitigation.
Mm-hmm.
It's a lot to be packed in there, I understand, um, it, it could be, it's overwhelming to us some days, so, um, feel free, we're easy to reach. So please let us know if there's any questions here, otherwise.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna thank you guys for the work that you're doing for Lake County and all the resources you're bringing here for us.
Huge.
I will move to, to approve amendment of the P S A with the Arkansas River Watershed Collaborative to aid Arkansas Basin communities in addressing watershed issues for economic, ecological, and social benefit.
Seconded.
All right, to a vote?
Aye.
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 All right.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you guys so much.
Thanks for staying here that long.
Yeah. All right, agenda item fourteen, discussion and consideration of a grant from the Electronic Recording Technology Board in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty nine, one hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and eighty nine dollars and fifty two cents to establish, maintain, improve, or replace county's electronic filing system, led by Tracy Lartes. Go ahead, Tracy.
So, the first argument I've given you is this state statute that makes a county clerk and recorder the authority over all things recording. The second item is from your new commissioner orientation, I assume you all went to. It's also in your handbook presented by C C I. The comment is commissioners have no direct authority over other elected officials in the county, except the commissioners approve the budgets for all of their elected officials departments. And the third item is also from a PowerPoint at your new commissioner orientation under your budgeting, that says that the role of the county manager is to oversee non-elected departments. So I guess my question to you is, why are you not approving this grant?
So we haven't voted on it yet today.
Okay, but last week, you had some questions.
And I. And, and two, two weeks ago, my hesitation was that our financial policies weren't followed.
Okay, but I'm not required to follow. Again, you don't have authority over others, so that is a question as to whether I need your permission to apply for a grant that is open to county clerks and recorders.
Well, we handle the finances, so yes, there.
You approve the budget, you do not have authority, no authority over other elected officials.
We're not telling you how to do your job.
I'm happy to work with finance, but I am not required to give you a permission to apply for a grant.
I think the trick for me, Tracy, is that you, is that anybody in the county has to get our approval to receive a grant.
According to your policy.
Well, we rece.
You do have the authority to approve or to disapprove this grant.
Right.
Yeah, but if you don't have the authority to tell me whether I can apply for a grant.
And what we're asking, what we've asked you to do is to please follow our procedures so that we have our fiduciary responsibilities tight and tidy. We're not saying that you, we're going to stop you from getting grants, we're asking that our processes are tight and tidy because we have so many other things to manage. That was, that was my confusion and I'd say kind of frustration two weeks ago. And now I understand that our finance department has all of the information from the grant. And while it was out, the order of operations was out, out of step for this one. Um, now you, you have submitted everything that our finance department needs.
It was submitted over two weeks ago.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we ask everybody to follow the same procedures.
We didn't agree to disagree on that.
That's fine, that's fine, but I don't feel good approving things that haven't gone through our financial policies and procedures.
And if they did happen, we'll agree to disagree on that.
Sure.
The, the financial policies make sure that we aren't going to approve something that's gonna end up costing us more down the road. It's a harder, closer look, that we're doing the right things for the taxpayers and for the citizens, the voters. It's making sure we don't make missteps, because we all know missteps happen, they've been made, we're paying a lot of money. Currently, for missteps that have been made in the past.
Mm-hmm.
We're looking forward, trying to make sure we don't saddle two years down the road, this table with more missteps. And applying for grants that haven't been properly vetted can lead to missteps, and that's, I think, what we're trying to say. We're trying to do the right thing for the taxpayers, we're trying to make sure everything's been properly examined so that there's no unintended consequences, which they're out there.
And I have some new information on that also. Um, the E R T B grants, according to John Paulson, have been extended to twenty twenty nine. If you approve this grant, I will submit another grant to pay for them any maintenance going forward. Because there is no limit on how many times I can apply for a grant.
Let me see if I understand this, so this operating system would be separate from the rest of the county operating system?
Correct.
Meaning Liz can't help you, any of our I T people cannot help you if something happens.
Correct.
So you'll have to call somebody from the front range to, to drive up?
Well, I would have to call somebody from the front range, whether it was the virtual machine that you guys run
And what, what's your?
or a dedicated server.
Okay, and what's your contention with sticking?
It's safer, it's my understanding that there's about ten other counties that Liz works with who all have a dedicated server and not a virtual machine. And by the way, this blog without my approval or input.
And so it makes it safer, but when these grants run out, we're gonna be, then, then the, the back end cost will, will come back to us, or.
You're gonna, you're gonna pay for it whether you like it or not, because it's a requirement to have this within your county. So you can accept a grant plus a grant to pay for the maintenance, or I can put in a supplemental water request that comes out of your general fund.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess I'm still not clear on why you, you want this new system because you think it's gonna be safer.
Yes.
And, and as I understand it, uh, that, again, we can agree to disagree, I don't know, it's not my area of expertise. But as I understand it, if you stay with ours, within the county system, it's gonna make the county more efficient, say.
In what way?
Well, say you're out of here at, at the end of your term, and someone else gets in, and then Liz can't help, none of our I T can, can go, walk into your office and help, so. I understand the safety aspect, and that's really.
I don't think Liz is capable of fixing a server, no offense.
I understand, I don't, actually, I don't.
So I, I'm not actually what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's more efficient, we've had. It's more efficient. We've had long periods during my two-year tenure where we have not had an IT person. I would rather have an outside person that I can count on to make sure that everything's operating correctly and take the chance of having some, either nobody or nobody qualified to help.
But we have helped IT wise for the rest of the county, and while they're here, they can help you.
Now. Now you do. How long are they gonna stay?
But at its core, this is basically just a server upgrade, so I guess I don't understand the conflict. And then I would like to say that in the last meeting, you said that you were gonna get Chris back on, on the-
As of today, they have my county access back.
And it's doesn't move with the Dunker.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
I just discovered that a few minutes ago.
We, the, um, why do only, if this is the best way to go, why do only ten out of sixty-four counties use this setup that you're proposing?
Because I'm talking about the counties that contract with Liz. I don't know about other counties.
I'm just, you know, it was like, it, it felt like a reason to go with it, how it was being presented. But, you know, when I kind of take a step back and look at it, I'm like, it's, it's, you know, less than a fifth of, less than, or a sixth of, you know, counties are using this system, and I'm wondering why.
Again, I don't know what the other counties do. I only know what the counties I work with, Liz, do.
Okay, fair enough. Why do you think there's so much pushback on this? Because it feels like, you know, we're, we're breaking our own rules here. We're, we're budget-wise, money spending-wise, with things that we are committing to to try to make sure that the county is being fiscally responsible. And that's like, that's our job, you know? I'm not telling you how to do your job as a clerk and recorder, but the request for-
I don't know how much more fiscally responsible you can be than to get a grant to pay for something.
I think not spending money on things before.
Can I finish speaking, please?
Yeah, you sure can.
How much more fiscally responsible can you be than to get a grant to pay for something that you are required to provide to the county? Because if I don't get this grant.
Yeah.
Why would I reapply?
Because you, the grant hasn't been secured and it didn't go through the proper channels to begin with, and the money was spent.
The money hasn't been spent.
You said you purchased the server, remember?
I put down a deposit first.
Right, so you just put money-
Out of my funds.
What do you mean your funds?
I have a ERTB fund also.
Like a separate bank account?
Yes, I do.
Why?
Because it's provided to me through statute, through the one-dollar recording fee for every document that gets recorded in the county.
You, wha- oh. I'm sorry, that is really confusing because the county's finances and all budgets go through the county-
It doesn't state statute. I can provide it to you after the meeting.
That'd be great, because that doesn't make any sense compared to all the things that I understand about our job, about our job for running, for running the budget.
I'm sorry, you don't understand it, but it doesn't state statute. It's been provided to the auditor.
I thought we got dinged by the auditor for that, didn't we, staff?
He was concerned that there was an outside account that he didn't know existed. And I can read out to him to get a little more clarification, but when, when asked for the, um, bank account information, I do know that Tracy provided it.
Provided it? Okay, great.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I understand you want to make everything safer, but I don't understand and I don't need to. It is the interpersonal relationship animosity, and that's what I don't like. So I think we all have to work together, and I'm afraid that whatever we decide here, Tracy, it's gonna create animosity, and I feel pressured by you. I feel, I already feel animosity and I feel pressured because my, my gut tells me we all need to stay on the same system. It's a simple server upgrade, and I feel like a personality complex has really turned this into this huge deal that it shouldn't be. And so, you know, that's what I'm at, and I don't know anything about service, I mean, making it safe, but, you know, as far as interpersonal relationships, when that isn't in good faith, then how can I?
Who's good faith? Undermine my authority and went out and made a decision about equipment for my office without my authorization. How is that good faith? Am I the one showing bad faith? No. I never, I proceeded to manage my office the way I felt was best. But your staff undermined my authority, did not include me, did not get my approval. So who is showing bad faith here?
Well, we just, I just got here, so I don't know. I'm, I'm listening.
Oh, I'm telling you, that's what happened.
And I'm telling you, there's an other side of the story that we also have to consider as new board members, as we haven't been sitting in here, so.
Okay, again. This grant, the server, is only twelve thousand dollars. For this grant, there's a hundred and three thousand dollars that pays for web hosting fees, recording systems. They will now come out of your general fund if you don't approve this grant. So who's being penny-wise and poundful of share?
It feels like there are two things going on. One, I want you to get this grant, obviously. I wouldn't have stopped you from applying for this grant, but you didn't. There's some weird relationship dynamic going on, as Matt said. But then the other part is I think that there's, like, there feels to be this fundamental misunderstanding between, yes, you are the clerk and recorder, but we provide the equipment for you to do-
No, you provide the budget.
Yeah, the budget, which purchases-
Do you want me to repeat this statement?
No, wait, just a second, just a second. I'm, I'm not gonna interrupt you. So we, we provide the building, the equipment, the finances for every department to be run. And when another elected official doesn't like the systems that they're using, it's a conversation. And obviously, I haven't been here for the conversation before now either, but this, when you're talking about good faith, like, I want to show you respect in your elected position, and, like, you are not a fiefdom on your own in here. We're all trying to work together, so I would-
Actually, yeah, I am a fiefdom. It says right here, no direct authority over other elected officials, except you approve the budgets for the other elected officials' departments. So you do not have the authority to decide what equipment I choose to buy. You can deny it. You do not have the authority. You don't walk in and tell me what kind of seals I put on my ballot drop boxes or my recording equipment, or which paper clips I buy. This is no different. You do not have authority over my office to tell me what equipment I must buy.
Yeah, it's a fundamental-
Well, there already is existing equipment, though, right?
It needs to be upgraded.
Just a, a server upgrade?
Yes.
I guess that's what I wanted to start. Why isn't that good enough?
Why is that not-
Why, why is the old system good enough? Why isn't just a-
It's from out of space.
It's out of space, and I've heard that that is not true. Am I wrong?
It's true, it's true, but we have purchased a new one already, but Tracy decided not to be in conversation with us, with us.
I did not choose. I was not included.
No, I've seen the, I've seen the emails, Tracy. That's not fair. They totally emailed you to ask if you would be part of it.
No, they'd-
They absolutely, I've seen the emails. So the, the problem is, like, yeah, if, yes, you should have a new server. Absolutely. Did we already buy one? Yeah. Did you apply for this grant without asking anybody? Yeah. Do we want to get you this grant? Yeah. And, like, what are we doing? How are we gonna move forward with this? Because this is not good. This is not the way to do it.
So now we have two servers? We bought two servers.
We have the old one.
Okay.
We have a new one that's been purchased by our, by the county staff.
That would-
Anticipating the need for an upgrade.
That would function if needed.
That has been, that has been readied for the clerk. Clerk said, no, thank you. I would like to apply. I am going to apply for this grant. And she has put down a deposit on a third server, which is, a new server is needed because the old server is full. And as Tracy has said before, two weeks ago, like, the grant is for more than just this server. But it all feels really messy still, like, nothing has been resolved. I do want to get you this grant, but like, this is not a good, this is not a good way to continue to try to do business together, and-
I agree.
Sets a dangerous precedent with how we are operating as a team.
Yeah.
Is my concern. And, yes, elected officials are autonomous in their roles and their operations.
Yes.
The budget, the dollars and cents that go into these operations are approved by the board. That's where, it's a pretty clear line, and, you know, as I'm spending hours in the seat and coming to understand this, there's a little bit of give and take about, like, we're all working together to try to do what's best for the taxpayers and what's best for the efficiency of the county. It's one machine, one team, and if we have one person who's just deciding they're gonna do everything their own way, it really sets a dangerous precedent, especially when we're talking about elected officials, because people can be elected into positions. It's essentially a popularity contest. It says, no way am I talking about your capabilities as a clerk. I'm talking about future itinerations of your role, people down the line. If they can come in here and be like, well, the previous clerk didn't have to work with the team at all, they did whatever they wanted, then we're stuck with this continuation of this non-optimal functioning machine. And it's, it's really upsetting that, you know, a lot, that this didn't have to be this way. This, there's just communication breakdowns and personality conflicts. And I'm just so, uh, hesitant to play into this and to, and to enable this. This is, this really didn't have to happen this way. That said, sitting in the here and now and looking ahead, you know, what, what do we, I, I'm at a loss for how we move forward on this.
I, I'm gonna, I am going to move to approve the grant from the Electronic Recording Technology Board in the amount of one hundred and fifteen dollars. One hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty, dang it.
I know, I would say that one too.
I'm going to move to approve the grant from the Electronic Recording Technology Board in the amount of one hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents to establish, maintain, improve, or replace a county's electronic filing system.
We'll save the information for-
Okay.
Do a vote?
No, I want to discuss this one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Here's where, here's where I'm at. Personalities and people in these positions aside, the, our policies, our financial policies were not followed to, to apply for the grant. The grant has now been awarded. Our policies would be that, which can't, which our finance director has requested all of the information that would be required for a grant request to be provided, and it has been provided, correct? Cool. So now we have all of this information. So I am okay saying, hey, our, our policies have been followed even though we're approving this after it's been awarded as opposed to before it's applied for. And I would say that in the future, if our policies are in place, they are established. Everyone is aware of our policies for how we, how we go after grants. If this policy is not followed in the future, I will definitely not approve any grant, no matter what it's for. Is mine, is where I'm going to fold the line. If our policies aren't good enough.
So you're like, this is the last time, situation?
Yeah, I, you know, we've given some, we've given some grace to other elected officials and other department heads as we transition into a new and tidier policy and procedure around finances. And I want to be able to offer that to a clerk and recorder as well.
Sure.
Um, but I don't, I'm, I'm not going to give that in the future, is my consideration. I also, I just want to say I'm, I'm feeling a little, I feel like I need more information, maybe from outside counsel, Chris? Not, not because of you, but because just like a really niche counsel to make it very clear who is in charge of equipment, who is in charge of finances, just so that we can kind of put this conversation to bed. Because I don't want to have this, like, turf war again. It's feeling, it's, it's not something I want to continue in this role, but like-
It's not good for staff. It's not good for the county. It's not good for the personality.
It's not good for anybody. Yeah, sorry, Chris, I was just-
The only thing I would say about that is, is I, I'm happy to pursue that when we have the B O C C complaint, but when we provided legal opinions to the clerk in the past, she was not accepted there.
Okay, well, that's, that's fine. We're a new board. That's how I, that's how I would like to continue in this position.
I just don't want to get into a situation where we pay for outside counsel to provide an opinion
Yeah.
that I believe your county attorney's office is fully qualified to provide,
Mm.
and then end up in a situation where it's not accepted, and then we pay for the clerk's attorney to provide a battling opinion that takes the contrary, and we're back in the same position as to whose opinion was correct.
It's an expensive rabbit hole. We know that it's-
Oh, my lord, yeah, I don't want that.
It's not, but I actually would go to district court and you would get a summary judgment.
All right. What do you mean, like when?
Well, and we can also reach out with an attempt to ask the Attorney General's Office for an opinion.
Sure.
On it, and see if they'll provide that without us having to engage outside counsel.
Someone at the state has to go on.
If you won't go to the Attorney General, we'd go to district court. There's currently a case court in Elbert County where the sheriff is suing the B O C C and the county manager for overstepping their roles.
I don't think we need to take so point of litigation on this. I think we should ask for, ask the Attorney General's Office to provide an opinion on it, and if they're unable to do that, then we can look at what the other options are. I don't think it advances the relationship that y'all were trying to establish by automatically jumping to a declaratory judgment.
No, not even close.
It's not fair to the taxpayers.
I don't think it's fair to anybody, like, that's definitely not, I don't, I don't want to be aggressive, Tracy. I want to be clear about those rules.
I would love to be clear also.
Yeah, and I feel like it's, there's, there's not clarity. There's clearly clarity for you. I get that. It's clear in your mind, but, but it's, but it's, but it's not, so.
The trust is very big, which is why people end up in court.
Maybe we should look at, like, some kind of, someone at the state level is willing to zoom with us about this and talk with, you know, they might not drive up here, but is there anyone who would even get on the horn with us about this kind of stuff?
Yeah, there's resources. I mean, we can reach out to CCI, the Court Recorders Association, DOLA, the Attorney General's Office.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
A lot of the resources, all you have to do is ask.
That'd be awesome.
I'll remind you that comes from CCI.
Yeah, but it's just bullet points. So I do think that, like, more education would be valuable to me.
Me as well.
Don't ask me for help again.
Again?
Give me help all day, dude. I need all the help I can get, because there's a lot that is.
Well, I'd just like to say two more things. One is, I don't know what unintended consequences are. It's a separate system, so I can't really speak to that, but, um, and also, like I said, about the interpersonal relationships, you're very concerned to me. I, I don't like operating that way, and I really, I would like to be here for you as an elected official also. And I'd like to, to establish-
I think that already is tough, it's tough in about a week.
Wait. Oh, Tim. Cause Tim is the barrier for you to be able to have this conversation, like, even with us.
Yeah, I see.
Yes.
Wow, that's disappointing. Sorry, Matt, you were, you were gonna say something?
Uh, no, I think my point was just reiterated, Tracy. We're just trying to do our jobs here.
Oh, my. Trying to give you free money.
Yeah.
You got that.
Like I said, I don't understand the unintended.
You would think so.
I don't understand the backstory. Now we have two, now we're gonna have two servers, what do we do with the old one?
Yeah.
So, I mean.
I'm sure you'll find a use for it.
Yeah.
It's a partition server, so it's not like it's completely useless.
Yeah.
It's, you're still using it for other things.
But just to be clear, the main reason for this is to make the voter rolls safer and, and put a firewall.
Recordings, safer.
It's all recordings.
Put a, put a firewall between your office and the rest of the county. Is that good for the county, Chris?
I think we've expressed concern repeatedly about the pitfalls that you do separate systems like this.
Because what if the next, uh, you know, the person who did your position the next time isn't, uh, you know, as honest.
I'm, I'm, I'm not for success.
Yeah, but if, Chris, can you just speak to that? You have concerns about, about that specifically?
In terms of adding a separate system for that?
Yeah.
Yes, and I think part of what demonstrates it is also the ability of the clerk to obstruct county operations by refusing access to those recorded documents, which are public records that the public are entitled to have access to. And, and so I, yeah, I think we could throw down a lot of different descriptions as to the flaws of having two separate systems and not being able to also look like more records and stuff. When we have allegations of, of folks who suggest inappropriate conduct by an elected official. If we don't have access to search those records in order to provide the information records request, then that could be an issue.
Mm-hmm.
And it's not, it, it won't be the clerk that'll be sued for that, not in complaints of either county. Cause it's the county's responsibility to respond to the court requests.
I would just add, I think we had this experience.
I'm very sorry, I should knock myself.
Where is it?
Uh, with our past sheriff or past elected sheriff.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, we just had a good day.
Very much trying to pull away from the county, create separate systems, uh, keep separate policies. And now we're trying to reintegrate back, which is expensive.
Yeah.
And.
Cause he selected a separate operating system.
Yes, yes.
And now we're.
Will she get it, the virus sheriff, yeah.
Will she get it? And so now it makes it really difficult for Chris to do her job and for us to share information. But there's still that firewall there that protects his customers and his information that needs to be legally protected.
I, um, and now they're coming back.
Yeah, they're coming back into our system.
The sheriff is now coming back into our system.
So this has the.
Can I provide an example?
Sure.
Fremont County got hit with malware about three years ago. It shut down the entire county, cost them three million dollars to bring it back up. But the virus was in the backup system and it shut them down second time. Because you didn't have discrete, um, systems. And so it cost them another three million dollars to bring it back up. So it's not necessarily a good thing to have everything under one umbrella.
But that virus could also hit your office and.
And then it won't hit you.
Yeah. That's a, that's concerning.
A firewall is different from a separate server though.
Yeah.
You don't have firewall on the same system. So.
We've talked through the Fremont County attack with a bot tech and it was the county's provider on those mitigating and existential, uh, circumstances. Our insurance carrier, to be carried by them, requires that we have certain IT policies and these things written in our IT contracts.
Mm.
So it's not, um, you know, something that's just taken willy-nilly.
What does CTSI say about this? Because we're, that's our insurance carrier, would, would this negate any coverage? That would be really valuable to know before we do it, so we're not putting ourselves at risk.
It's also when we need.
We're pointing to, we need a separate policy.
Yeah, separate coverage for, versus the, the, the initial expense not covered by the court.
And that's an unintended consequence that I'm not aware of.
Yeah.
And also, like I keep saying, the next person that gets into your office and then subsequent people who are in your office may, may get along with the IT people who could help you a little bit and not have to send somebody from Denver, so. And I'm really concerned about the court requests from, which most, or a lot of them probably come from your office and Chris not being able to help there.
All court requests, oh, that was the county attorney.
That's, that's, yeah, they all come now because they are now under process by the clerk's office. So they all come to the county attorney's office for processing.
And why aren't you processing this? Court requests?
You want me to do?
That's a fundamental disagreement as well?
No, I don't have any problem with the county attorney.
Except let's look forward to the future here. We're in a situation where we don't have, uh, Chris Floyd is our county attorney and we're contracting out attorney work, that could get incredibly expensive, wouldn't it? I'm just trying to think about dollars and cents for the county.
I mean, we will have to do that for an interim, whatever.
Yeah.
Well, depending, who knows, whatever Chris's timeline is.
We're happy to take it back if that's what you need.
Ooh, so can we find out how much this costs from CTSI to get a separate?
Well, we'll need to check and see if there is one.
It will, we need one.
Or check with CTSI?
Yeah. Or it might just add on to our existing policy, or like, there could be a change here.
Right.
So I'm glad you brought that up, Elsa, there's one of those little hidden things that we, that don't really come up until we start talking about all this stuff. It's why communication is so important and when we have.
And, and that can be added into the, your IT grant.
You know, another question, I guess I, I have about this grant is that
Significant.
Since there is this influx of money that's gonna help your department, is that, is there gonna be a portion of that that we can pull out of the budget to offset? You know, like, will this offset some of the county's expenses we're looking at in growing and, and will this save us some money?
I, yes, because you are required to have the web hosting and, I mean, we probably wouldn't do the digitizing.
I'm just talking about like this is, you know, a six-figure grant. And if that is for your department, does that mean we can pull out six figures out of that budget to use on other more pressing matters?
I'd have to look at the grant and the budget. I'd have to look at the budget.
Did you put the grant in?
Because we actually put this together, as you can see, last November.
So did you budget this grant being approved?
I'd have to look at it. I was having a medical issues at that time.
Um, one of the things i- in terms of going forward is I think careful about excluding services like digitization without confirming that it's not needed for our accessibility requirements.
Can you say that again, please?
So, you know, the new WCA, the accessibility requirements.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And so things, right now, one of the issues that we have with High County is it's not fully accessible because of the nature of the documents that stand into it.
Oh, yeah, right.
So like New Colorado law mandating us to make sure that anything new is accessible to, yeah.
Yes. It's accessible. Right, so we would might wanna cut those corners out in terms of whatever services we have.
Okay, Susan.
That does, there should be, they are fully complying with the law.
Let's say?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, Chris, do you understand that that is true or not, Chris?
I have no idea, have no idea what their systems are, I don't have any information on let's, systems and stuff and if their work product, what they're providing. I just know that the current High County, which is I believe been supported by them for quite a while, is not from my terms of what I consider there.
Black, black with Colorado weather confidentiality, regarding whatever it was. What, what kind of, okay, yeah.
Oh.
Oh, my gosh.
So, so Stacy, or Tracy, I'm so sorry.
So that's just.
Tracy, I think we do need to know if this was budgeted or not. Because if it, if it was budgeted, awesome. If it wasn't budgeted, we would have to submit a budget.
Amendment?
Supplement.
Yeah, supplement, supplement?
Supplement, okay.
Supplement.
Supplement on a budget, which is again, like, why we do it before we apply for a grant. So we can build into our budget so we don't have to be submitting these things to DOLA to get approved. So I just also wanna, I, I feel like we need that information, cause that would be another small consequence of us not being in your budget.
I'd be concerned about the, the ongoing, uh, grant, you know, does it come from the state, Tracy? Is it, I gave it wrong. Is it a state grant or a federal grant?
They're state grants.
It's a state grant.
They're funded through the, um, three-dollar e-recording fees charged for every document.
Well, if that grant dries up for whatever reason.
The grant has been extended to twenty twenty-nine.
Yeah. But we have to look beyond twenty twenty-nine, can't just look, you know, four years in the future. I don't know, you guys, I need, I need more information. I've tried to decipher this backstory and I really still don't understand it. I, uh, maybe when Tim leaves, we can have a conversation with you.
Sure.
Uh, but right now it feels like a, feels like a playground fight to me.
Yeah, I'd love information from CTSI, so we have eyes wide open going into this.
And then all the unintended consequences, and I apologize, we should have probably done this over the last two weeks between this last meeting and this meeting.
Honestly, I was ready to do it, and I, I definitely feel like it hasn't been resolved.
The, the big issue is we don't want unintended consequences, we don't want, you know, these, our insurance policy doesn't cover the, uh, you know, I am encouraged that you're willing to take on the court, court requests, are you? You willing to do that? When, when you think?
Of course. I, I would have to say that our recommendation at this point, we've invested a lot of time and energy and stuff in setting up the court process now that it's automated.
Mm-hmm.
Before, one of the issues was that, um, the clerk was the only one, specifically the clerk, the only one receiving those requests. We only have three days to respond to them, so if she was out of the office or unavailable to check her emails and stuff, we might not get them in a timely manner. This way it's automated, they act automatically come through. Um, so in all honesty, at this point in time, I think it'd be in the county's best interest too for them to continue to be processed by the county attorney's office instead.
Okay.
Okay. I don't have any questions.
You do it.
Do you have a question that's on the floor that against the majority?
Yeah. Do you have a follow-up or do you have any question?
Uh, yeah, my, my last notes from your last meeting was that you all wanted a signed agreement, not just a verbal agreement around continued access to High County, so.
We have, well, I revised the agreement, um, so that it's compliant with Colorado law, provided signed copies from, my name, Melissa Decker, myself, uh, for that access.
Mm-hmm.
So the document's been revised, so whoever doesn't have access to Vegas and all from that, I, I would trust the clerk
Okay. Mm-hmm.
will restore their access as well.
I just wanted to know, that was, that was a terrible meeting, that stuff.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Insurance part seems like a big, big part, but we don't know.
We'll prioritize getting that answer. And who, as well as, uh, whatever opinions we can, um, get from the state or otherwise on the state authority question.
So these are, these things that we're hashing out right now, like how it works within the budget, whether this can backfill money that could be shifted around, the insurance stuff. This is all stuff that we would have been able to address if we did everything in the right order that we kind of requested.
Mm-hmm.
So, the feeling I'm getting is that we table this until we can just make sure that we get all the information that we would have gotten previously.
Finance department has it all, but we, this is what we would have asked during the budgeting, budget, grant request procedure.
What's our deadline on this? Do, I, I don't see it in my notes, I know I've asked this question before. I'm not like, before we wait too, I don't wanna wait too long, I don't wanna lose this thing.
I don't recall there being a deadline.
There's no deadline.
Um, do we change?
You just have to vote down your motion.
You just have to. You just call the vote?
Okay, would, wouldn't we do a motion to table until the next?
You have a motion now.
We'll do that after.
Oh, okay, okay.
Do that after.
Uh, so call to a vote? Okay.
I move to table this. Discussion. To April first, thank you. I'm about to table the consideration of the grant for the Electronic Recording Technology Board from the, from them. In the amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar, four hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents to establish, maintain, improve or replace the county's electronic filing system until April first.
First.
Date certain.
About the next regular meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll second the motion.
To a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Your vote, Commissioner Bullock?
Aye.
Okay.
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 Done, consent agenda.
I've lost my agenda mic. Okay, we are. My computer's not working. Favorite. Sometimes I lose, I mean, reconnect to Wi-Fi. No internet access, uh, available. Um, okay, uh, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Consent agenda contains line one, approval of payroll for March seventh, twenty twenty-five. Approval of accounts payable packets, excuse me, from February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five to March second, twenty twenty-five, and March third, twenty twenty-five, to March ninth, twenty twenty-five. And approval of regular meeting minutes from February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I, I.
So I moved.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
All right, to a vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, um, the next bit is about packets. Um, all packet materials for agenda items are available upon request. Um, through Sandra, her email contact is on the Lake County website. Um, we also have a notify me option for anyone who would like to subscribe to email or text notifications from the county. Please visit www.lakecountyco.gov/list.aspx. That does it for today. And that concludes today's regular meeting of Lake County Board of County Commissioners. It's one twenty-nine PM. We're gonna wrap this up.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Elsa, thank you, Ms. Bullock, thank you, staff, our conversations. We're all still here, breathing.